Maybe, but I'll be home pretty late.
Oh, what time?
Maybe nine o'clock.
Oh wow.
Okay.
How's that?
Alright, see you.
It's a long night, you ever stay all night?
We have close to here in the middle. We're thirty seconds waiting for you to send it up.
Welcome to UNA School Board Work Session. Today is November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Reading is being held at the Eagle Elementary School. President Shuini and President Dave Shiver. Vice President Tony McKeever. Rockford Allen. Todd Mathi. Superintendent Maynor. Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodburn. Myself, Grant's daughter, Business Administration. The time is three thirty P M.
Thanks, Grant. We want to welcome everyone here. Appreciate those that have made the trip over. Tonight, we'll have the work session at three thirty. Impact eight meeting at five thirty and the business meeting at seven. We'll try to stick to that schedule as close as we can. Tonight, our Reverend will be by board member Tony McKeever.
Our dear Father in heaven, we're grateful to meet together and to have the opportunity to work together and to learn and grow. We ask you to bless that we can have thy Spirit here to guide and direct us and to help us to do those things which will be in the best interest of the children in our community. We ask you to bless that we can have respect for one another and work together and that we, our minds can be open and we can be aware of every needful thing and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Tonya. We'll move on to leadership governance and we'll just turn the time over to the superintendent and he can lead us through that.
Okay, great. Thank you, President. We're gonna do a little bit of reading today on Policy zero zero two dot zero three zero five, which is Board Members' Principles of Operation, Conduct, and Ethics. So if you'll click on the link in Board Docs under one A, it'll take you to that policy. And the very top, section one point O, says the Board commits itself and its members to ethical, professional, and lawful conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum when acting as board members. In such conduct, the board members shall fulfill the responsibilities set forth in the oath of office. One point one, district administration shall provide newly elected or appointed board members a copy of this policy. So as we continue to read through this, board members, take note of anything you might have questions on. In the end, we're gonna just answer a pretty simple question or discuss a question. That is, should we propose to change or update this policy? Or is the reading tonight enough to just satisfy our own information and knowledge base and then move forward? Okay, two point O, let's go ahead. Grant, you wanna read two point O for us?
Two point O, Board of Education members shall have commitment to the owners, the people of UNA School District, unconflicted by loyalties to staff, other organizations, and any personal interests as a parent or guardian of a student.
Okay, let's start on the far side. Denise, can you read three point O, including the subsections there?
Yep, three point O. Board members shall avoid conflicts of interest. Conflicts of interest with respect to their board responsibilities. Three point one, board members shall, upon taking a seat of office or upon discovery, disclose their involvements with other organizations, with vendors, or with any associations that are not or might reasonably be seen as creating a conflict. When the board is decided upon, when the board is to decide upon an issue about which a member, about which a member has a conflict of interest, that member shall withdraw without comment, not only from the vote but also from the deliberation. Three point two, board members shall not use their Board of Education position to obtain employment in the district or other advantages for themselves, family members, or close associates. Should a board member apply for the employment in UNA School District, he or she must first resign from the Board of Education. Three point three, members shall not accept or receive directly or indirectly a personal financial benefit or accept any gifts, token, membership, or services as a result of a district purchase entered into or anticipated in future from any person, firm, or corporation.
Okay, thank you, Denise. Let's read through them all and then we'll come back to any questions that you might have. Todd, you wanna go ahead and take four point O?
Sure. Four dot zero, board members shall recognize the authority resist with the board only in official meetings and that the individual member has no legal status to bind the Board of Education outside such meetings. In all meetings, a majority of the members of the board shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business and no action of the board shall be valid unless such action shall receive an approval of the majority of all board members present. Board members must follow all open meeting laws established by the current Utah Open Meeting Law. Individual board members have no authority with interacting with the superintendent or staff except when expectedly authorized, I'll say that, by the Board of Education. When speaking with the public, press, or other entities, individual board members must recognize they have no authority to speak for the board unless specifically authorized or to repeat explicitly stated board decisions.
It's Todd. Robin, you're up, five point O.
Alright, five point O, board members shall honor the high responsibility that Board of Education membership demands by, five point one, then there's a whole bunch of this. Thinking and acting always in terms of students first. Two, understanding and accepting that the basic function of the board member is policymaking, not administration. Three, ensuring that appropriate facilities and resources are provided for the proper functioning of the schools. Four, making policy decisions without submitting to political pressure. Five, representing the entire school community, not just the precinct from which the board member was elected. Six, becoming well informed concerning the duties of board members and proper functions of public schools. Seven, ensuring that they are properly prepared to participate in board deliberations. Eight, exercising oversight on behalf of all students and constituents regarding district policy, goals, and programs. And nine, refusing to discuss confidential business of the board, including closed session items, anywhere but in the proper board setting.
Okay, Tonya, six.
Board members shall respect relationships with other members of the board by, one, making decisions only after all facts bearing on a question have been presented and discussed. Two, respecting the right of others to their opinions and supporting the majority rule principle. Three, providing any prepared material for use during a board meeting to all board members prior to the meeting. Four, demonstrating respect for fellow board members at all times.
Thanks, Tonya. President, you want to, seven?
Seven, board members shall maintain desirable relationships with the superintendent and the staff by, one, having the superintendent present at regular and special meetings of the board. On rare occasions, the superintendent may be excused at the discretion of the board. Two, referring complaints to the superintendent and discussing such complaints at a regular meeting only after failure administrative solution.
Okay, thank you. I'll take eight. Board members shall meet responsibilities to the community by, one, appraising the present and future educational needs of the community. Two, communicating the goals and actions of the board and district to the community. Three, insisting that all district business transactions be conducted on an open, ethical, and above-board basis. Four, seeking financial support for the schools. Five, involving the community in the schools and the educational process. Six, visiting schools and community, excuse me, visiting schools and school functions regularly. Seven, participating in community events. Right, Grant, you wanna take nine?
Nine, board members shall strive to have meetings conducted in a businesslike manner with appropriate decorum through, one, attending meetings and being prepared to participate. Two, a well-planned agenda that is adjusted to focus on the ends. Three, keeping discussions centered on the agenda and staying focused on board business. Generally holding discussion after a motion and a second with allowance for each member to speak on each issue. Five, balanced participation with everyone participating and no one dominating. Six, sharing viewpoints in a clear, concise manner. Seven, accomplishing work in an atmosphere of trust and openness with respect and courtesy. Eight, taking action at policy level rather than the operational level. Nine, monitoring policies to facilitate rigorous accountability and assurance of superintendent performance. Ten, supporting the superintendent's reasonable interpretation of applicable board policies or further clarifying board intention by revising the policies. Eleven, making decisions based on information garnered from community input, both formal and informal.
Denise, do you wanna bring us on with number ten?
Alright, ten, the board will govern lawfully on behalf of students with the emphasis on strategic leadership for the future of UNA School District through, one, outward vision rather than an internal preoccupation or personal agenda. Two, encouragement of diversity in viewpoints. Three, strategic leadership more than administrative detail. Clear distinctive, oh my heck, sorry. Clear distinction of board and superintendent roles. Collective rather than individual decisions. Six, future thinking rather than past or present. Seven, governing proactive rather than reactively.
Okay, thank you. So, board members, if you'll go back to the agenda item on Board Docs under one C, there's a set of questions under administrative content. The first question, and this is really just for a quick discussion, but, one, do board members have questions regarding any sections of this policy? Is there anything in particular you have questions about, board members?
I don't think I understood four point three. I don't know what it's saying.
Say that.
Four point three? I don't, I don't know what that's saying.
Did you say number three?
Four point three.
Four, sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing with the echoing in here. So, four point three, let's go through that. Okay, four point three, so individual board members have no authority when interacting with the superintendent or staff except when explicitly authorized by the Board of Education. What that means is, is that a single board member can't really direct, can't evaluate, can't do those kinds of things. It would, it would take the action of the whole board. Or, in some cases, there could be direction by the board president, which would be authorized by the rest of the board. So I think that's it.
I think, oh, that makes sense. We maybe should clarify that because that's not what I thought it said and it was confusing to me, but.
Yeah, we can certainly look at rewording that if that helps, for sure. So, four point three, I'm gonna make a note of that. Thank you. What other questions do you have, board members?
I do have something, but it's kind of more procedural. It's going to... No, I just wondered, this is something else. So, on eight point three, I just wondered if we could add good faith negotiations or something with good faith. I mean, maybe it says, maybe that means the same thing, open, ethical, or basis. It's talking about...
And you'd like to add?
Something, something somewhere about acting in good faith. And maybe that's between board members or...
What does that mean?
I assumed it was acting between board members, yeah.
Open, ethical, and above-board. It means that you don't negotiate with one another like at face value, like lip service, and then you go behind. So, good faith means this, you mean what you say, you have integrity. Like, if you say something at the meeting, then if you change your mind, which you're totally able to do, you probably call the person and talk about it instead of just blindsiding them another time in another place.
Okay, no, I've taken note of that, Robin. Thank you. Other questions?
President, really fast, may I ask a question?
Yes.
So, I'm just curious, I understand eight point three to be talking about the district, district being, business department being required to conduct open, ethical, and above-board basis, meaning that they would be acting in good faith. But you're talking about adding something additional to where board members...
Probably six, probably six point O, sorry.
Oh, in six point O?
No, I said, I said eight point three. I wasn't gonna talk about that, but it just... I think that probably would be more, my intent would be more in six point O somewhere.
So that the board members would participate in, or act in good faith, one with another?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, that was my bad. That's more what I meant. I didn't mean it, district business transactions.
Just, just for the record, I'm not proposing that the business department not act in good faith.
Right, 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 right.
The business department would act in good faith, but I just wanted to clarify what you meant by that.
Yeah, sorry.
Robin, we also might look at putting it in one point zero. So, so add like a one point two. And, because one point zero speaks specifically, the board commits itself and its members to ethical, professional, and lawful conduct. I think it fits somewhere between ethical and professional.
Okay. Also, just format, we need to do general policy statement for one point O. Just to match our format, to be consistent.
Oh, right, we would do that with any new policy, right?
And then I did have one more thing, I'm sorry. Does anybody else have anything? Then I'll come back.
Go ahead.
I gotta find it though, just a second.
I can slip one in.
Go ahead.
So, three dot two. It says, should a board member apply for employment in UNA School District, he or she must first resign from the Board of Education. So, does that mean before you apply? Or, once you apply, you must? I, I think it means that upon application, you should resign. I think that's what it means.
So there's no guarantees of a job, is what we're trying to get at, correct?
Yeah. That's all, Robin.
Are we to the point where we can discuss it or are we still just asking questions?
Well, let's, let's note the questions and then, then we'll go to the next question, which, yeah. Okay, do we have any other questions about the items?
Yeah, one more.
Okay.
Just go to nine point four, and this is kind of procedural. But when, this talks about generally holding discussion after a motion and a second with allowance for each member to speak on each issue, that's what it says. I just wondered if we could, which I know that's Robert rules and that's a good parliamentary procedure, but I'm wondering like, on some issues, like big issues, can we, I would really like to add something or where we can discuss it before the motion is made. I think that the motion, when you, when you do the motion before there's a lot of discussion, I mean, it naturally comes to emotion, but when you do that, it assumes that there's really two clear-cut positions, like either for this or against it. And I think it would serve us well if we, especially for big, big decisions. I'm not talking about like the consent calendar and stuff like that, I'm just talking about bigger issues, I don't know.
I wonder if that's why they use the word generally there.
That's what I...
Because it does provide us the ability to have those discussions outside of that format.
So, I felt, I felt really boxed in. I'm just gonna be really transparent sometimes with our way we do it, our procedure. So I wondered if, when they have those big discussions, if I should reach out to the board president and say, please, can we discuss this before the motion's made? I mean, what, what do you guys wanna do? I mean, 'cause I feel really inflexible sometimes.
Yeah, where this states generally, I would assume it's at that point, before a motion's made, once the president asks for a motion, you'd say, can we discuss this for a minute prior to that motion? And I think that allows that to happen, right? Because I agree with you, I think there's, it's really difficult sometimes after a motion's been made and then to change that motion if we find, you know, seems like our last board meeting, I was the one that made a motion and we changed that motion and it made it, if we could have had that discussion prior to it, may have made that a simpler process. But yet, sometimes it's that motion that generates that conversation as well.
I guess my question is, generally, we have our discussions like now in board work session. So we've already had an extensive discussion. I guess I'm not sure what is the purpose of doing that again.
Well, we didn't, we didn't. We have, sometimes we haven't. Like, let's just talk about, you know, the Friday schedule. We did not have any discussion in work session and then...
But we had a whole work session devoted to that independent topic of the work session. So there was a lot of discussion during that, that...
Also, things changed from that section. I'm just, I'm just saying, in that case especially, it would have been helpful, I feel, anyway.
And I, I think that because it says generally, I think it would be appropriate if a board member does, you know, ask the president to have some conversation before, before we're ready for a motion. I, I just think generally, right, in most cases, we follow parliamentary procedure and it guides us to, to the right, through the right process. And...
I think all anybody's gotta do is ask for some discussion before we entertain a policy. I don't think we've ever stopped that, to my knowledge.
That's correct, but that's up to the president and that's important because the other thing that can happen is if you discuss everything before a motion, the meeting can go very, very long.
Yeah, I'm just talking about a complex question, not, not the regular stuff.
So are we okay leaving it where it says generally, just with the, that's why we're doing this review because it helps us better understand, you know, the things that we're bound by. And, Robin, if you feel comfortable that that word generally allows you as a board member to ask the president to discuss something, then I think we can leave it there and move forward.
Sure, as long as it's like a safe place to do it. I'm happy to leave it as generally.
Okay, any other questions before we move to the next item here?
We're still gonna continue talking about this, right?
Yeah, yeah. So if you look at item two, let's go to item two. The question, now we, Tonya, at any point, if there's something that doesn't get addressed by these questions, right, we can come back to it. But the second question I had in the protocol is, is a formal review of this policy necessary at this time? That's a question. So I've written down, I've got three specific things and there's one more that I can add and it's a simple thing. On five point two, it references policymaking is the board's number one thing. I would propose we change that to governance. Because the board does a lot more as we look at your specific roles. Policymaking is one of several roles of the board. And so I would suggest we change that to governance.
I don't see that we have governance in there anywhere. Did we?
So, so with that, so with that, we have, yeah, we have three or four things that have been brought up. If, if the answer to the question is that yes, we should do a formal review, then the next question is, if so, should the review be conducted by the Board Executive Committee or the Board Policy Committee? I think it could go either way. These aren't major changes. It's really up to the board on what direction you'd wanna go with that. Notice question four before we answer that one. If not, has this review been sufficient to support board members in their service, right? But let's go back to three. What, what do you guys think as a board? And this is just direction, in the end, Dave, you can point, point us in the right direction. But let's, let's discuss whether it should go through a formal process for review and whether that should be the Board Policy Committee or the Executive Committee.
So, so we've really only had two items, correct?
What's that?
That we would consider changing? That would be four point three, right?
Yeah, I've got five point two, eight point three, and then the question was the acting in good faith, which we could add to like a one point three.
Those seem fairly simple.
Can I? Sorry. For me, like, I think I'm reading this and it feels very too detailed. And, and really kind of like somebody...
Are you having a hard time hearing?
Okay, sorry.
Let's move a little bit. For some reason, I can't pick anything up, she said.
Yeah, I think it's because of the echoing in here.
Again, I'm sorry.
It could be me, my ear, I just had surgery on my ear, so I'm having trouble gauging what I, my volume is. Okay, so, when I read this policy, it feels like maybe it went overboard to the point of defining every little thing. But instead of saying that we'll, we'll be involved in the schools, it's specifically saying like, you're gonna go to community events, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do, which obviously we all want to do. But it, it just feels like a nitpicky list that maybe somebody sat down and said, how can I control every little thing? I don't know. It just, it just feels like it should be a little more, here's the idea, we're going to show respect, we're gonna be honest, we're gonna show ethics. You know, I'm not, some things are obviously needed, you know, there's state law. Obviously, we can't apply to work for the school district. There's things obviously need to be in there, but there's other things that just feel like, did we really mean to spell out every, you know, visiting schools and school functions regularly? Obviously, we need to do that. I'm not sure that it needs to be legally obligated in a policy to do that, but I, I don't know, just my thoughts.
Yeah, so, Tonya, it definitely takes a different approach than what we have in our board handbook, which is more general terms, right? So I, I understand what you're saying and I'm curious if other board members feel that way.
Not until she said that. But now that I read through a couple of... But now that I read through a couple of those, it does seem a little bit nitpicky.
As a new Board member, I really like this, and the reason why is when I came in, I had no idea what I was doing. I had no idea what lane I was supposed to be, what I could do, and so I would have loved to have something like this. Not that it's, you know, that this is how it has to be, but it was, this has been very, just right here going through, and I'm still considered new, it's been very helpful for me.
I actually agree with that, that this information is really good training, I'm just not sure that it should be legally binding, that someone could, I don't know, prosecute me for not attending enough school events, that sounds kind of a little much to put it in policy.
Is it the shalls you feel is prescriptive?
I'm just not sure why that needs to be in policy. I think it's good training, I think it's obviously something we all want to do, that's, it's not like I don't want to go to school events, that's not, I'm just saying, to put it in a legally binding document, a policy that you shall do this, I'm not sure this is the place for that, it might be in our handbook, it might, you know, this training is important, we all need it. And I, and I, and I think there's really, I don't disagree with any point in here, I'm just not sure it all needs to be in policy.
My opinion, I don't find it prescriptive, I find it, I mean, I like it. It's black and white.
It does sound like our handbook is a great place for a lot of this type of stuff, because it is, most of it is is things that we could be doing to enhance our school. But I really, I haven't looked at a policy as being binding, so you could say, yeah, you need to attend, it doesn't say a number, you need to attend so many activities, you need to, you know.
So, this is a great, this is a great conversation, and I, I I love that we're talking about where it does belong in policy or in the handbook. I'm gonna come back to the question now. How should we review it, what should that process be, should it be our Board Policy Committee, should it be the Executive Committee? I'd feel comfortable either way, so do we have, do we have a proposal maybe?
I feel like this is the Board's policy about how we operate, so for me, I think this is an executive decision.
Okay. Are you guys okay if we run this through the Executive Committee?
And then, do we have a say?
Well, ultimately, yes, because you're on the Board, so you'll vote. It'll go through two readings, just like any policy change would, it was just to get there, rather than bogging down our Board Policy Committee, we'd leave it at the executive level. I think that's what you're saying, right?
And I'm happy to have as much extensive conversation here with everyone. I'm not trying to just send this to a couple of members of the Board, that's not my intent at all. I just think that this, these decisions belong to the Board.
Wouldn't this come back before the Board for two readings, before anything was decided? How do you want to work it, Board members, Tanya spoke her piece, what do the rest of you want to do?
I'm good with taking a look at what kind of work you put up together on as an Executive Committee.
Denise?
I'm actually good either way. I think if we don't get there through Executive, maybe we can push it through Policy if that, if there's a concern, but I'm okay through Executive. As long as there's all the discussions.
Okay, Superintendent, let's try to take care of this with the Executive Committee, and if we can come up with something that makes the Board happy, then it'll pass on first and second reading, and if not, we'll have to go in a different direction.
Okay, and just let me tell you how I'll approach this then, and give me a nod one way or the other. I will take a version where we just address the changes, leaving the policy as it is with the changes we discussed tonight. I'll give you that draft, and I'll give you a draft that puts a lot of this into the handbook and leaves some of the, you know, like, if you look at the headings, right, of the policy, keeping that in policy, but putting a lot of the details back into, you know, like procedure, right, for handbook. So, I'll bring those two, we can look at those and evaluate them, and then decide which, you know, what we want to do as far as bringing that back to the Board, to the Board. Okay, does that sound good?
Can I just add one thing, will you guys please look at page eighty and eighty-one of Coming to Order, which is Board Members' Code of Ethics, as you look at it too? I think it's really.
Yeah, it really aligns.
Yeah, page eighty and eighty-one, and it, it's, I will, I will, I mean, just look at it. Coming to Order. It's good.
Are we good then, to move forward?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you.
Thanks, great discussion. Committee reports, somebody jumping up and down, want to start us off tonight?
We got an audit one coming up, and Grant and I were gonna talk, and we just got busy, and I never talked to Grant, I talked to the, I can't, I don't know where it's at, the guy that's doing our audit, what was his name, Kelly?
Kyle Green.
Yeah, he was very impressed with the team, said they were wonderful, they professional. He was really impressed with the way you guys approached it and how helpful you guys were. I know we've got a meeting on the twenty-first, the Audit Committee to go over the audit, but he had nothing but great things to talk about. I forgot to tell Grant, I reached out to him, but.
That's fine.
But yeah, and then my other meeting's not till later, so I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Todd, any reports?
No, Finance Committee canceled our meeting this week, no really pressing issues, and so, unless, Grant, you had something that you felt like we needed to bring up?
Nothing that was terribly urgent at this time.
That's how we felt, so.
Okay, Robin?
Just, I gave you, I hope you all got a chance to look at the notes from USBA meeting. If you haven't, they're there, just the one main thing, just remember your professional development is due on December first. And just, I think we're gonna talk about this in Calendar Items, but Gentry for the Foundation is coming December eleventh, so we'd love a lot of people to go to that and support, because that directly impacts our students fundraising, so, and then we'll talk about, and that's, I think that's it.
Okay, Tanya?
You can do policy.
Help me if I forget something in policy. So, Policy Meeting was pretty simple, we have one policy coming before the Board today on midterm vacancies, and I believe that's second reading, isn't it? And so, I believe so.
It's first reading.
Oh, it's just first reading?
Yeah.
Midterm vac, oh, okay. And I feel like there's been a lot of good clarifications on that, actually, I think the Superintendent talked about one change that was made after the Policy Committee met on that, the midterm vacancies on the Board. That we don't, that even if the county replaces a Board member, because we didn't get it done in thirty days, that's just a temporary appointment according to the state policy. So, that was much more clear, so I appreciate that clarification. And I think that's all with Policy Meeting, am I forgetting something?
Another one we sent back.
Now, I will tell you, that was my interpretation, I still stand by it, as I've read it again, I think we're good. But that's a lot different than the understanding we had last time we went through that process, as it is, where it felt like, well, the county then can just appoint who they want, and we're then stuck with that individual, whether we like it or not, you know, they weren't gonna do that, they were working with us, but but that's, that's what we thought might happen, but when you read the code, it's pretty clear that that appointment is temporary until there's either an election or the Board yeah, appoints a replacement, so, it's good, yeah.
And then we met in facilities, do you want to take that one, do you?
Okay, facilities, Rob, we had a groundbreaking for our new preschool, and the official title is, Superintendent?
So, it's gonna be the Central Cove Early Learning Center.
Central Cove Early Learning Center. There's actually some trenches dug and some cement in the ground, they're trying to get as much done as they can so that we can continue working this winter, the weather will kind of determine how far we get to go with that. The Ag Building is very near completion, I think we're within a few days.
Yeah, we're now in a, we're working off of the punch list. Now, there's over a hundred items on that punch list, so there's still a lot to be done, but floor coverings are in, the cement's polished. They're finishing up on the fire alarm systems, electrical, things of that nature, but it looks really nice. It's gonna be a great facility for our students in the Ag Sciences.
So, when do we look at moving them in there?
Well, we're gonna make that decision in about another week.
I was gonna say, we have a new semester soon, so.
Yeah, we, we started in on that decision about a week ago, and we decided, let's wait two weeks to see how much they get done so that we can better, we can be more accurate. We probably can get the students in there well before Christmas break, but there'll be more working around the students. If we wait till Christmas break, we're pretty sure it'll all be done, so we just need to decide what's best, our furniture is gonna get here, it'll, what, arrive in two weeks, Kristy, about? Okay, so, so really, anytime after that, we could move students over. We are in a substantially complete mode right now, and we can move that, the students over at that time.
Great.
I think our problem is right now, there's circumstances beyond your controls when you're waiting for materials sometimes. And so, you know, it's hard to nail that down, if everything we needed was in the middle of the floor, I don't believe they would be long getting completed and and gone, but some of them things we can't control, because until it shows up on freight, you don't know that you have it, and so keeps us wiggling out there a little bit, but we're getting really close, and and the FFA group is excited to get moved into that building, and we're ready for that to happen also. Other committees, reports, I don't know if there's a ton, we're going to demolish the District Office, the old one, not our new one, because we like that one, but we're gonna tear the old one down. The contractor would do it the cheapest for us if he could do it when it was convenient for him this winter, when he didn't have other jobs going, and so, when the weather gets cold and nasty way, that's when that will happen. Any other thing on facilities, Superintendent?
No, I think you hit the main things, President.
Okay, Grant, do you have anything on committee reports that you would like mentioned that hasn't been?
I have nothing to add at this time.
Superintendent?
No. We need to go to number three here, when, I don't know if you saw that one, just a report on the Board Retreat. And I don't know if you want to do that, or have me do it, or somebody else, but.
They, um. Denise, do you want to report on the Board Retreat? I know I'm just throwing that out there, if I'm catching you off guard and you're uncomfortable, we'll give it to someone else.
Well, the soup almost hit an owl on the way back, that kind of scared us, that wasn't his fault. No, it was really good, we talked about what our vision is and what we can do to kind of help make our district better, we talked about maybe incorporating service and what that looks like and stuff. I thought it was pretty productive and open-minded, and so, we really enjoyed it.
Board members, anything else that you would like to add?
It was short and sweet, and I was great. Good food, good friends, so thanks all.
It was.
The food was really good. Sitting around waiting, probably.
The trip to the mountain was fun, enjoyable, we spent a lot of time that evening going over the word "let me," Superintendent?
Well, we reviewed our handbook, right?
Handbook, the Board Handbook.
Yeah.
And I think that's always good, because that gets us Board members back and re-centered and doing what we're supposed to be doing instead of worrying about maybe what somebody else is doing, so I think it was good, we had a good discussion, and it was a good evening.
Yeah, and the other thing, you know, that I think was good about this retreat is we did focus on instruction with the instructional framework. We put a lot of energy into this, our leadership team, directors, principals, we've put, I don't know how many hours, hundreds of hours collectively, right, into this framework, and so we spent some good time. The Board understands better now what our instructional framework is, and our six-week cycle, our tree evaluation framework, and our district improvement plan, and how all of those things fit together to drive instruction in U N A School District, and so, I appreciated the, you know, you guys tolerating me to some extent, I know it was supposed to be twenty, and we went over a little bit, but but the discussion and just really acknowledging the importance of of teaching and learning in our school district, so, thank you.
So, you gave us some, a sneak preview of some new numbers that came out from the high school, is that something that's been made publicly?
It's public, yeah.
So, I just would.
It's public, our U N A High School is the only school district, I mean, the only school in our district right now that is above the state average in all assessed areas, right, in achievement and in growth. That's pretty significant, right, when you're above the state in achievement, and then your growth numbers are as impressive as we're finding at U N A High School, what that means is, at this point, instead of us chasing other schools, other schools are chasing us, that's a pretty good place to be, so a great celebration for what's happened at U N A High School. We also have some amazing results in some of our other schools in the district. In general, growth is high across the district, we're moving in the right direction, or at the middle level, elementary levels, so we really like that we're moving in the correct direction. You know, growth can only be high so many years before you look back and all of a sudden, your students are achieving above the state average, and that's our goal.
That's been our goal.
Right, to get there, so we're moving in the right direction.
Been impressive, Principal, we actually talked about what's next, as far as, how do you set that goal, once you've achieved at that point, and where do you go with it, so so I think maybe it'd be good for her to give us some insight as to what she sees.
Yeah, yeah. I know we've talked a lot about the ACT, haven't we, Kristy?
Impressive, yeah, so, so I just was wondering if those vice principals, or the principals at the middle schools were gonna try and take some credit, and they haven't said much, but I think prep to get them there. Prep to get them there, I think has, and I think it starts from, I guess we could say, now preschool level up, and so I'm just impressed with what each of you and your teams have done, so that was a great report for me that night, it made my night, so.
Oh, thank you, yeah, it's good, good job, principals.
Knocking it out of the park, it's awesome.
Principals, all of you, we looked at not just the high school, that's the one we get to celebrate, because it's there in all three categories, but we looked at all of you, and we appreciate the hard work, and a lot of you are there in a couple, and we set some lofty goals, and it takes a long time to get there, and we appreciate all the hard work that's going on to try to obtain that. Kristy, will you please tell your, thank you, of course, will you please tell your staff thank you? We appreciate them leading out and getting us where we want to be, we appreciate that.
So, we actually talked about a celebration of some sort, so, give us some thoughts.
I didn't have an item three on this, or are we on policy?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, board members, um, item number two on the work session, policies for approval on first reading. Um, Superintendent Rick Workford is gonna lead us through that one.
Okay, we went over the, uh, the board member midterm vacancies on the board. And if you'll just click on that policy, uh, there's two documents. One is the memo and the other one is the policy. So, so I took a stab at this. I, I made quite a few changes, uh, looked at code, sent that to the policy committee. They polished it up a little bit. Uh, I feel really good about, um, what's being proposed here tonight. And we already talked about one of the big changes, um, earlier in the meeting. Tanya, read the one that brought, yes, Tanya brought up, uh, that, that we, we clarified the fact that the board, um, if, if the county steps in, right, after that, that thirty-day timeframe, I've gotta find the line now, sorry, I don't have it. If you go to five point three, right? So, if the board fails to make an appointment to fill the vacancy within thirty days after a vacancy occurs or forty-five days after a vacancy occurs due to the death of a board member, then the county legislative bodies, so our commissioners, may fill the vacancy by appointment. A, a member appointed and qualified by the county legislative body shall serve until a successor is elected or appointed and qualified by the local school board. And that's, uh, all referenced in code. So, that, that's a, a pretty good clarification from the way it was written last time, which it kinda felt like, well, the county could, could appoint somebody and then, and then they would, they would fill the, the entire term, right? Outside of that, most of the changes are, I, I changed the policy, the, the, the sequence or order of it to, to, to go into a, well, things were a little out of order in statute. If you read the statute, uh, it doesn't follow a, an orderly process, right? A sequence. And so, I took the statute and I rearranged it just a little bit. So, most of the content's still there, but it's ordered in such a way that it's more sequential in how things would happen or take place. That's, that's mostly what, what's, what's changed. Any questions? We did add definitions and then the general policy statement.
Board members, do you have any questions for the superintendent?
No, it's just more clear, thank you for taking a stab. It was quite convoluted, I like, and unclear, so thank you.
I think I'm good, thanks.
Do you need another minute, Todd?
Okay, thanks superintendent.
Yeah, you bet. This is just first reading, so if anything comes up over the course of the next month, we, we can, we can make changes or polish.
Okay. Um, item number three, items requiring future board action. And we will turn the time over to Grant Stoddard for the minutes for the October eleventh work session and business meeting.
Thank you, President. So, the minutes have been circulated to, to you as the board and, uh, we've, we've made any changes that, that have come in, come in. I know I made some recommendations that were, were adjusted and I'm not aware of any others that were, were requested. So, at this time, I would just ask board if there's anything you see in the minutes or you saw in the minutes in your review that needs to be added or changed and. That's all I have for that item there.
Robyn and Tanya, are you okay? Okay, thank you, Grant. We're not gonna let you quit though. Purchases over fifty thousand?
Yes, so a memorandum has been circulated. Uh, there, there were two purchases this, uh, month, uh, over fifty thousand. One was to Vernal City, uh, the other was to Cisco Inter Mountain. And the first one, uh, was for the permit and corresponding inspections that would need, that were needed to build a new preschool. Uh, the, the other one was a school foods, open, uh, purchase order for food that, that helps us avoid volatile food markets and just allows us to get that food in bulk and so on, so. Those are the two. Do, do any of you have any questions?
Grant, the only question I had, Vernal City, the permit process. Did we include that in the budget? Was it approved in the, the budget last year? Or is it coming out of that total fund that we approved last year? Or do you know the answer to that?
So, so as I've looked at it and discussed it with, uh, our purchasing agent, my understanding is that the initial twenty million that was proposed was, was the estimate that, uh, kind, that dealt with that range that was discussed by our architects and our, our general contractors. Um, one of the things that I've seen is that there were some fees like this that have come up that may not have been included in that. And so, some, I mean, this is being paid for with the amount that has been allocated and authorized. But there may be some, some fees like this that, um, need to be added additionally down the line. Now, that, that being said, uh, as, as you're aware, there were contingencies in the amounts that, that Stout has presented to us. So, we might not reach the whole amount that was authorized, that twenty-three, uh, point eight million dollar number. And so, some of these might just be swallowed up in all of that. But, um, there are, there are things like that and the, you know, some of the fees with the, associated with our architect that, uh, may not have been added above and beyond that.
Thank you. So, looking forward, after taking a look back at the Vernal City project, we should've worked a deal out with them on any future.
That's what I was just thinking.
Permit, sorry, that's just my thoughts. When I saw that number earlier today, I thought, wow, we, we could've negotiated with them maybe.
Well, and one, one thing I will add, I've, I've spoken with, uh, Donny Laws, our maintenance quarter coordinator about this and the inspections that we get, uh, that, that we will be getting with this fund. And, and he's assured me that when it, were we to go and hire an independent inspector for the, the services that Vernal City's gonna be providing, it would've been a significant increase to that number, so.
I guess that's good to know. Thanks.
Yeah, you'd be surprised, um, when you get into projects like this, like even the rebar has to be insp-, I mean, the rebar has to be inspected. I mean, before it's even on the job site, they have to inspect it for the structural integrity of the rebar. So, there's, there's a lot that goes into a project like this to ensure that that building's safe for many years to come.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, thank you, Grant. Informational items, um, holiday gift certificates. Grant, do you wanna go over it?
Uh, yes, and, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, as I, I, I circulated a memo about this. Um, this is a, a traditional holiday voucher that, uh, that the board had previously already budgeted for. Um, we, I, I got some figures today from our, our payroll specialist, Dorothy McConkey, saying that, uh, um, I don't have, a little over eight hundred and fifty employees are gonna qualify for it, which puts it right at a range of forty-four thousand, uh, and change. Uh, so right in that range that I mentioned in the memorandum. So, um, we're, we're within budget and, uh, this is just something that we, the, the board has authorized in the past to do to say thank you to our employees of the holiday season.
Any questions about that, board member? Wow, we're zipping right through here. If we can keep Jaime in line. We got a little green out of him. School Trust Annual Board Training. Jaime Labelle will take care of that for us. He'll try to, he'll try to train us. You can have mine.
Okay. Good evening. So, uh, with School Trust Lands, um, really by code, every year, there has to be a, a training um, that takes place for the board. Just, uh, the money is, is, is very important for us. Like, if I look back to FY fifteen, so almost ten years ago, we, uh, we were receiving about four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Now, today, I, I believe for this year, the total is one point, almost one point two million. Um, now, if you look over the last few years, that, that money is kinda flat-lined, we have them just above a million. And so, we're staying, we're hovering, we're not, we're not decreasing at all. But the money, um, is pretty valuable, uh, to the schools. As you can see, um, in the PowerPoint that, in the memo, if you went to the PowerPoint, there were seven key responsibilities for the board. But really, in my opinion, there were, there were two responsibilities that really directly impact you as a board. And one is approving school plans every April or May. And then, eh, later on in the year is, is reviewing the reports from, um, the, the Trust Lands reports from the schools. What, the other one also is to make, to ensure that not only you're trained, but also the community councils at the school level are trained. And a lot of the responsibilities, it seems like, has to come right from the board. We have procedures in place to guarantee, um, that those responsibilities are met at the school level. A lot of the work is done at the school level with the principals and the school, school community councils, okay?
And you take care of that, correct, Jaime? To see that they're trained?
We take care of that. Well, the schools will, will institute the training. Ruth Ann Nelson, my secretary, uh, will follow through with any expectations that are expected at the school level, such as, um, having their websites updated. Uh, that we'll go through a checklist and we make sure that, uh, certain, uh, assurances are met. Um, we always wanna meet in a timely basis, but Ruth Ann does a really good job of making sure that we follow through with any requirements at the state level, okay? But I have the, uh, the PowerPoint up in front of me and I don't know if you, as you went through it, do you have any specific questions regarding, um, your role or any questions with, uh, Trust Lands, Denise?
Are we getting enough people that, on community council? I know last year, we had trouble in some schools getting, um, the parents to step up. Do you know what, what that looks like this year?
You know, I haven't had specific conversations. Aaron is saying we're, we're doing okay. I, um, Tanya's saying we're doing great. Tanya's saying not so much. I, I think it depends. I know Superintendent has been big, uh, uh, in the last few years about actively recruiting parents and having them be part of the learning process. But I think it just really depends on, on the school level. We could do a thumbs up, thumbs down right now from everybody. Yeah, so in some cases, for the most cases, I think they're, they're doing okay.
Okay, I thought I was just wondering if more parents were stepping up.
Good question, thank you.
Have a question on your PowerPoint, can I ask?
Please.
It says the most effective boards have a policy regarding board member expectations in working with school community councils and says could include, and it gives some different things like, um, provide data to the council's election timeline, secure elections, uh, required training, things like that. Do we not have a policy about this?
We could have a policy, uh, that explicitly, that, that outlines every piece of this, we could.
My only thought was just on how the elections are handled, cause it seems like it's different from school to school and from time to time on how we do that. Just a thought.
No, it's a good thought. And I don't know, eh, you mean, then I wanna be clear, like with the elections at each school, they're, they're done differently? Like how they solicit membership from?
Yeah, some years, it seems like we, we get something that comes home and, like with our notes, just asking for people who wanna sign up and letting us vote kind of thing. And some years we don't, some years it, this, I don't know, I've seen, even seen years where they were just kind of handpicked. So, I just, I don't know, seems like it should be consistent, whatever that is.
I agree. And it could be procedural. Sometimes we can add those in a procedure versus policy. So, that could be something we can look at for sure to, to see that we are more consistent. That maybe even the voting, that it's not bundled in a newsletter, that maybe it's more intentional. And I haven't had conversations with the principals, so I'd wanna get some feedback from them on how that's actually, uh, implemented, but we could.
Yeah, would be good to have information before we did anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm gonna write me a note. Any other questions, Rob?
Yeah, I just had two. So, part of the training talked about it's for the board members to examine where is, uh, school community council money is being spent, or I don't know if it's the board, but, um, in the, in the, in the context of if it's a global, um, expense inconsistent, considering putting it in the district budget, are you, who's doing that? Who checks that? So, it's, in the training, it was examine where school community council money is being spent. If it's a global inconsistent expense, consider putting it that expense in the district budget.
I'll give you a few examples of that. Um, anytime that any Trust Lands funding, uh, expenses, I sign every, eh, it comes across my desk. And so, the first thing that I ask Ruth Ann is, is it part of their plan? Cause if it's not part of their plan, uh, Ruth Ann will reach out to the principal. And sometimes it is part of their plan, sometimes it is oversight, so we do have a control there. The second piece, I can give you an example, like, uh, Chromebooks, iPads. Uh, a number of years ago, I wanna say about six or seven years ago, many of the principals spent a lot of their money on, on Chromebooks and, and, and iPads. Well, the district assumed that cost with COVID. Uh, and so that's an, just an example of when we were seeing across the board. Uh, and now you won't see as much, uh, uh, spending of computers, you'll see more funding on personnel. Does that help answer?
Yeah, yeah.
But honestly, Rob, we don't have a formal procedure.
Like an oversight person and like, just check.
We really don't really, I don't have anything formal that I really looked at and say, where are we spending our money? And go, where can we adopt, where can we, uh, use district funds? It just came naturally because we were spending so much in, in computers.
Yeah, and I guess the principal would probably alert you or Grant or somebody and say, hey, we continue to have this money we have to spend and is there any way we could, the district could absorb it into the budget?
One thing that's unique about Trust Lands is it's really a flow through the schools.
Yeah.
And the schools, that's why they were supposed to involve their community council because they have, they have a lot of, of autonomy in how they spend those funds. Uh, and it's really set up to be that way. If you look at statute, that's, that's how Trust Lands is, that the legislator at the time didn't really want that money to, to run through the school district and have us control. They, they wanted that to, to go to, to the schools.
Yeah, it's really the only funding source. We have federal funds, that's the funding source. So, once the money comes to us, it is, it's sent to the schools. We don't have any say, oversight on how that's spent. There's some assurances, of course, uh, and that's where you come in as a board to say, uh, are these, are these, uh, plans meeting those assurances?
And then I just had one other quick question, just, I think it was under best practices or s-, I can't remember where in the training, but talked about just, I just wanna make sure the principals are aware that talks about us visiting their school community councils. And it says in your board area each year, and I know speaking with other board, boards around the state, a lot of them really do that. So, just wanted to know that, that's one of our things in our purview that I would love to do. It'd just be a fly on the wall.
I'm sure they, I'm sure they would love to have you there.
We need those dates, yeah.
Do you need those dates? Cause I think we have those on the websites. It has their, the, the meeting dates on our websites. Each school has a Trust Lands, it has a website and it should have their dates there for their meetings.
Can we get those back on the calendar, the community council or the meetings? I don't know if they're all on there.
So, principals, did you hear that? When Shawna sends you out the, the monthly, what's on the calendar, just make- just make sure you have your community council meetings on there. I, I've seen a lot of them on there, so I'm assuming you are, but if you're not, let's get the community council meeting dates on there. I know it's hard, because sometimes they change. I'll have board members call me and say, hey, I'd like to go to, you know, La Pointe's or whoever, right? And, and then I contact the principal to let you know they're coming. And it seems like about a third of the time, I get a text back that says, well, we've moved that meeting. So that, it makes it tricky, but I still give, give them to us, uh, each month, and then we'll improvise as we need to.
Any other questions?
The only thing I would like to say is I wish our parents understood more how important it is the community council stuff. When I got voted on, I didn't even really know what it was. I kind of got thrown in there, and I wasn't very happy, but I was really glad by the end of three years that I was on that. So I, I, every parent that ever talks to me, I'm like, you've got to get on the community council if you want to make an impact. So I think we need to start maybe focusing on that a little bit, and ma, and ma, and we probably are. But that's the only thing, is when I got put on there, I had no idea how important community council was. And it's this Trustlands that are key, so.
Thank you.
That's.
So one quick question, Jaime. You said that we've been stagnant on where we're at as a whole, just our district?
Statewide.
What's that?
Statewide.
Statewide. So, so in the distribution from?
If you go, let's just go back from FY oh-one, like over twenty years ago. That's a five million dollars for the state.
Right.
And I don't have, the last two years I have FY twenty-one, then went to eighty-eight million, almost eighty-nine million. Uh, and so it was growing exponentially, and then it started to taper off.
So that's where you said it started to actually taper it that way?
Taper off a little bit, and, and the, and maybe Superintendent can talk more to that, but I know it's a challenge, because, um, this money is important money, and it's, it's substantial enough that if we don't spend our money, uh, the legislature will look at that money and go, do you really need the money? So we, we have to be pretty aggressive and be purposeful when, when using this money. Superintendent?
Yeah, so the state is studying intergenerational equity right now with Trustlands money. And what they've found is that our generation right now is receiving less money, you know, per, adjusted with, with inflation, less money per capita, per student than any generation currently has. And the future generations stand to, to receive a much larger benefit the way that it's structured. So I'm guessing that in the next year or two, we're going to see a pretty significant increase in the Trustlands funding. So money's there, we're just, our state is, our state is, you know, it's, we're conservative, right? So we're holding on to that money for the future, but in doing that, kids twenty years down the road, fifty years down the road, are going to benefit way more than our kids do today. And that's intergenerational inequity, and so they're trying to fix that.
All right, yeah, I've heard that. Scott told me a little bit about that, and that's why I was curious if, if it was something that we needed to, to pursue more to, to get those funds, or if it was something that we really need to work with them on distributing those funds.
Right, yeah.
All right, great, thank you, Jaime.
I believe that's all, Jaime.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, anything else for the work session? Grant or Superintendent? I'd entertain a motion to close the work session then.
I would make a motion that we close our work session.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Todd, seconded by Denise. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We'll reconvene at five thirty sharp for the impact.
Welcome to the UNA School Board Impact Aid meeting. Today is November 8, 2023. The meeting is being held at Eagleview Elementary Auditorium, 301 North, 55750 East, Roosevelt, Utah. Present at this meeting is President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and myself, Grant Stoddard, Business Administrator. The time is 5:30 PM.
Good evening, everybody. We welcome you to our UNA School Board Impact Aid meeting. We're glad everyone's here. Is Emily glad she's here? This is her first one. She's so glad she's here. So, we're gonna start off with La Pointe Elementary. Our Principal Emily Arnold is here, and so we'll turn the time over to her. Can I just announce then, so that we don't... Is that okay, Superintendent? Second, after Emily Arnold, Principal Chris Jones from Eagleview Elementary, we'll go from one presentation to the other, and is that okay?
And you guys can hear me in the microphone? I do love a microphone. I think it's just warming up. Okay. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about La Pointe Elementary. At La Pointe Elementary, we are wolves. And this summer, after I got this job, I decided to do a little research about wolves. And I found out that wolves are complex, highly intelligent animals who are caring, playful, and above all, devoted to family. I learned that they educate their young, take care of their injured, and live in family groups. And that the wolves howl to solidify pack bonds and to warn other wolves to stay with. So we decided, as a school, that we were going to be better wolves, that we're gonna work on and focus on being wolves this year. So, first of all, wolves... It's kind of like bigger, anyway. Wolves are caring. So part of what we do is, when we get together as a staff, we take the time to write some postcards to some of our students and tell them the wonderful things that they're doing. We show our caring to them by sending them positive notes. We're playful. Something that La Pointe has done for a lot of years is their annual walk to school. So once in the fall, we all meet at Liberty Corner, and we walk to school. And so, if you look very closely, there's some famous people that came. So it's hard to see, but right here, that's Ronnie Wapsok, the Education Director for the Ute Tribe. So she came out, I think she has some nieces or nephews that come to our school, so she came and walked with us. This is Georgia Tabopon. She is our La Pointe Princess, our Ute Tribe Princess. She wore her crown and walked to school with us. This is one of our aides and her kids. And Friday, she doesn't work for the school district. She works doing something else, so she came before school or before her other job to come and walk with her students. Another aide with some students. And then right here, that famous person. Tanya came and walked with us. She has a kindergartner, and she's our school board member that represents our school. So we like to play together. We're devoted to family, so part of that is to figure out who your family is. And so we had a meet and greet in White Rocks. And this included the schools that have our students that they start in La Pointe, and then they go to UNTO Middle School, and then they move on to UNTO High School. So we met with some of the families that their students come to our schools. While we were there, we had Luke Duncan came, and he's one of their elders for their tribe. Anyway, he talked to us about education and how education is important to the Ute Tribe. They educate their young. So something we're working on this year is we have another intervention program, the UFI, to help with phonics and stuff. And so this is some of our aides and teachers that are teaching from this new UFI program. So we want to make sure we teach our students where they are so that we can get them a lot of growth throughout the year. We howl to solidify pack bonds. So the way we do this is we recognize the good things that our students are doing. When they work hard, so wolf stands for something, working hard, overcoming obstacles, loving learning, valuing yourself, encouraging others, and strengthening our community. And one way we do that is we have wolf tags. And when a student... And when a student gets a wolf tag, the teacher or another adult in the building recognizes what attribute of a wolf they do, and they get that, and then they get entered into a drawing. But every time they get a wolf tag, they come to the office, and we give them a little treat and celebrate the hard work that they're doing as a wolf at La Pointe. Something else we do is we recognize a wolf of the week. And we... Teachers choose a wolf of the week about the attributes. And I'll... I go into every classroom and celebrate the things that they did that week to become our wolf of the week. And then, we howl together to solidify pack bonds. So, we celebrate like, why? Why do you think that Holly was the wolf of the week? And we talk about the wonderful things that the students are doing. And then, before I leave, we... On the count of three, we're all gonna howl together for Holly. So, because we all are a part of a wolf pack, our job all together is to help take care of our students. So, to end, we're gonna all howl together on the count of three. You ready? I gotta hear you nice and loud back there, Jeff. You ready? One, two, three. Ah! That's the end. The learning curve is steep, but there's people, like other members of a wolf pack, that are there to help you along the way, so that's good. And every morning when I get to drive into La Pointe, it's so beautiful, and I feel so lucky and blessed to be able to drive to La Pointe every day. And the kids are so cute. The kids in reading are doing a little better than they are in math, but we're... That's why we started this program, is 'cause there's still a little bit of a struggle. We gotta get them up to grade level. They are working hard. And the teachers are working hard. And when we got this UFI program, I gave it to some of the teachers, and I said, "Just read the first part," and we had a training on it. But they read... The few teachers read it, and when we got back from the training, our first grade teacher was like, "Okay, this is what you're doing," to our kindergarten teacher, "and you need to do this for all of your class, and this is how you're gonna do it." And she was like, "And third grade, okay, you need to take your students that are struggling, and you're gonna give them this test, and then we're gonna..." "And you're gonna come to me, and I'm gonna help you know where your students need to go for UFI." So, they were very excited about that targeted intervention for the students. UFI, it's the University of Florida Literacy Institute, is where we got it from. And it's district-wide. They're using it... We're using it district-wide.
Well, welcome to Eagleview again. Is right forward, Emily? Yes, it is. So, there's a lot of fun stuff that's been going on at Eagleview since the start of the year. We had a great start to the year. We adopted the red carpet, except ours is green, so we have a green carpet. Beginning of the year, we've had Red Ribbon Week, not Red Whicken. And our Hope Week combined. That's the whole school there. After our Hope Walk, we've had our Halloween festivities. So, we play hard, but there's still a lot of work that we need to do. Last year, we were able to celebrate fifty percent of our students on Acadians are proficient in reading now, but there's still a long way to go. And we have lots of ways to grow. I was kind of excited that Superintendent mentioned the instructional framework that the district has put together. What I wanted to share with you today is kind of how this works at the school level. We work at continuous improvement. And so, you're probably familiar with the walkthroughs that the district does. So, I wanted to go through some of these walkthroughs that we've done and how that feedback gets to us and the changes we make as a result. So, our first walkthrough was the seat of pictures. We'll have nothing to do with the content, by the way, but enjoy them nonetheless. Our first walkthrough was the CKLA walkthrough. So, there are district leaders come in, and with our instructional coach and myself, we go through the building, and we look at, for the first six weeks of this year, the initial parts of the instructional framework in addition to our CKLA targets. And then, we sit down in a debrief, and they tell us what they've seen. And they talk to us about things we're doing well. And so, see, these are... When you see nine out of nine, that means we observed nine teachers. And nine out of nine were on the pacing guide and that their schedule matched. And so, these are the good things that we're on target with. And then, they give us some ideas about things that we could improve. So, one of the ones we had, this first go-around, we have learning intentions, which are like goals for the lesson that day. And then, there's something called success criteria. Now, for us at this school, it was new. Learning intentions, we've done for a long time. But success criteria, which shows a student what they need to do to be successfully, to show that they successfully learned or mastered that learning intention for the day. It helps a student be guided to where they need to be by the end of that lesson. We hadn't done that before. So, when they first came through, we only had three out of nine that had any kind of success criteria posted for the students. And so, they told us, "You need to work on that." So, we, as a school, got together. We did some professional development. And then, I go through with our new teacher evaluation tool, which is called TRU-G, which you've heard about. And I'm able to make those observations and have conversations with teachers to help them get to the target. And the first go-around, after I had talked to the staff, we jumped to twelve out of fourteen of the teachers that I observed having them posted. And then, we jumped to thirteen out of fourteen. And the only reason we're not at fourteen is 'cause we have one teacher who is still working on understanding exactly what it is. But we continue to move towards improvement. Our next walkthrough was our Ready Math walkthrough. And again, we had closed, things we were doing well. Then, they give us feedback. This was a little surprising to us, because that first part, positives to correctives, when students are doing things they're supposed to behaviorally or that they're supposed to with procedures and routines in the class, it is best, best practice, and research shows that if teachers acknowledge and praise when they're following those behaviors and routines correctly, students do much, much better. Instead of a student, a teacher just saying... For instance, you can say, "Great job getting your math book out and being ready to work." That reinforces that routine, and it keeps the class moving much quicker. That would be a positive. As opposed to me saying, "You don't have your math book out. You need to get your math book out." That's a corrective. And a positive recognition of following routines builds climate and builds positivity in the classroom. We were down to two to one, and this was really quite horrible for our school, because it's something we had worked on previously. But the district walkthrough caught that we had dropped. And so, we... I talked to the staff about it, and we didn't have to talk much, because they all knew where they should have been. And our next walkthrough was actually seven point six to one, but rounding up to eight sounds better. They also tell us some things that require a little more work. And so, when they talk about, "You need to work on your program routines," these are things specific to iReady. What we'll do is plan a more in-depth professional development, which we have ready to go on the seventeenth, which is our professional development date. And then, Jaime and our math instructional coach will come through. They're gonna do another walkthrough for us with iReady, because we feel like we needed that extra walkthrough. And, well, Jaime felt like it, but I was on board. So, anyway, just continuing to grow and get better at what we do. I wanted to highlight... You won't... There's so much here, you probably won't even be able to read it. But we were able to get a full-time coach this year, instructional coach, Lacey Olson. The reason we did that is because we got an early literacy grant. Jaime secured that for us, and now we have Lacey here full-time. That early literacy program, which is the same program that drove letters that Superintendent originally brought into our district, now the entire state says everyone needs to be letters-trained. It's the same initiative statewide that is part of this early literacy program. So, we had three state coaches come in with our coach. This didn't... Amanda Remington, our literacy coach from the district, was involved as well. They saw tons of good stuff that we were doing in literacy. Now, this... And I just... I think it's important to recognize, the district right now is operating at a fairly high level. If any of you... Well, we have one educator, but if you understand the level of instruction that's occurring right now versus what I was doing twenty-two years ago when I came into the district, we're operating at a very high level. And when you have state people come in and they watch what we do, they watch our UFI instruction, they watch CKLA, and they're blown away at the level that we're functioning. And so, that's... That's kudos, not just to Eagleview, but kudos to us, because what we're doing is what the district is leading us through. And then, they gave us some feedback as well. And it was actually funny to watch them sort of struggle. They had a few minor things that they gave us to work on, and we're gonna implement. But it was just a testament to me to have people at the state level come out, instructional coaches, and talk about how amazing a school in our district is doing. And so, that was really exciting. The whole idea is this... These are our reading scores, and now one at the bottom is where we wanna be. It's continual improvement. And you don't do that by standing still. We have to continue to improve our instruction so we can continue to drive kids towards proficiency. So, that's what I wanted to share today. Any questions? Good?
You have a... You have a reading coach, a literacy coach. I was just asking about math. How's the math looking? And then, just generally, how's the parent buy-in to the... Sounds like more rigor and... Or is it...
I'm gonna turn the time over to the superintendent for some comments.
I'd just like to thank our principals for, you know, the amazing reports and also the district office directors. Jaime... Jaime is a partner for both of these principals. So, he spends a lot of time on the West Side coaching, mentoring, and helping, assisting, holding accountable, all of those things, right? So, I just appreciate when we talk about, you know, "we," right, as a school district and teamwork. I feel like out on the West Side here, we're all in as a team, helping each other, and just appreciate the good things that are happening. So, principals, again, thank you. Please thank your teachers. That's where it all happens, right? Where the rubber hits the road. We're only as good as the teachers in the classroom. Research is very clear about that. So, appreciate leadership. Very important. Thank you.
We want you two principals to know that we have one board member that is very passionate about the West Side schools, but we're proud of you guys as a board, all of us. We're proud of what's happening and the progress that we're making, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
I was just thinking, I just appreciate all the efforts of both of our principals. There's just such a positive momentum on the West Side, so I'm just really grateful for that. And I can feel it with the parents, and I appreciate it, and with the kids, so... And then, I would just say, if there are any concerns, don't hesitate to reach out so that we can help, because if we don't know, then we can't... We can't help, so never hesitate to reach out and let us know if there's anything that we can do to help you.
Okay. Thank you, board members.
Shaun, do we have any input? Do we have any input? Okay.
We okay? Okay. Item C. We're gonna turn the time over to our Business Administrator for our Survey Impact Aid Committee.
Okay. Thank you. So, board members, if you can pull up the memorandum I wrote for this portion, it will be easier for you to see the questions that were asked in the survey that was sent to... Well, the way it worked is it was sent first to Amanda Jenks and Ronnie Wapsok of the tribe, their Education Department, and then they disseminated the survey out to parents. And this year, we got, from what I'm told, an unprecedented amount of responses. It may not seem like a lot at this point, 'cause there were only fourteen, but it's a significant amount of responses. And we're hoping to continue that and continue being able to improve our communication with our... The parents of Native American children and also with the tribe so that we can continue to get their feedback and improve the process of educating their students. But as per our policy and also federal regulations, we're supposed to send out a survey to parents of Native American children and the tribe to get a sense of what we can do better. And if you look at the memorandum, there were... There were eight questions asked. They... Really, it was about four substantive questions and then opportunity for people to comment. So, the, the four substantive questions were, you know, on a scale of one to ten, with ten being high, rate how comfortable you are visiting your child's school. Uh, another one was how aware of events and activities happening at your child's school are you? Um, then it was, I know who to contact at my child's school if I have questions or concerns. And then, uh, I am aware of the additional services such as counseling, extracurricular activities, special education, what offered at my child's school. And if you, if you look, I, there's a section about the responses. Uh, overwhelmingly, the response was, we were given a ten, uh, by, by the majority on each of those. Did you have?
Yeah, just a, a quick note. Um, so the questions came in very tight collaboration with the, uh, the youth education department. Uh, they, they pretty much gave us the questions they wanted. They wanted to know the answers to those questions. So, that's where those questions came from.
Thank you. Um, so, so if, if you look, you know, on, on each one of these, we, we had at least seven respondents, uh, giving us the, the perfect score of ten, and then quite a few giving the, the six to nine range, um, and then only a few of, of those giving us scores of less than five. Um, when you, when you look at it, uh, the kind of in-between question one, three, five, and seven, you can see the, the feedback. So, for instance, in the, the response to the question about how, uh, I, I know who to, I'm sorry. I'm comfortable visiting my child's school. The ones who gave the low responses, they, they had the feedback of things such as, uh, there's a statement, "School does not make you feel welcome." Um, "Better communication from staff members, always be greeted." "Employee-to-parent communication, I should be able to visit any school in Uintend Duchesne School Districts without feeling apprehensive." "My grandkids go to the school, uh, in Duchesne, and when I go, uh, go to the school, I get the help I need," and so on and so forth. And these were, these were responses about our, our, our two elementaries here on the West Side, but also the, the middle school and the high school. So it was, wasn't nailed down to which school was necessarily talked about in this, in this instance. But as you can see, you know, we've gathered, gathered this input and, um, there are, there are ways that we can improve and, and try to make things easier. I know one that stood out to me was make it easier to get notices. Not everyone has social media. And, um, was, was one response. And so with this information, what we as a district need to do now is, uh, is provide written response to this in the form of, uh, the, the plan is to have a writing that addresses these and, uh, is then disseminated to parents and to members of the tribe, uh, and tribal officials. Uh, is, is the next step per our policy and per the federal regulations. So, um, that's it as far as the survey. Uh, in, in terms of what we would love as, as administration from, from you as board members is as you read through these, if you have, uh, thoughts or, or recommendations on how to respond, as we're crafting this, we, we would love to hear it. Um, because then we will send that response on and, and help them with that. So I guess I'll, I will pause at this point and, and just ask, are there questions or, or, uh, feedback on what you see the responses, uh, in the memorandum there?
So, there is a comment, and, and I'm going through it. It's, it talks a little bit out. I'd like to include my child in these programs, but the home income makes it, makes it, I was saying, ineligible. I'm just curious, I, I think most of these programs or most of any program, we have the ability to help those children rather than students. I, I, they being made aware of that, I guess, is my concern.
I, I think one of the challenges, and superintendent, please chime in if you have this, is, is it's hard to say what, or hard, hard to know what programs they're talking about. Whether it's, whether it's a, an extracurricular, whether it's an in-the-school program that they're discussing, because there are some differences in terms of, you know, school fees and, and all of that for, for those. Now, we do have waiver programs, uh, uh, in, in play, or waiver opportunities such as, you know, a person, uh, qualifies could, could get their school fees waived. Um, and so, that's, that's, we could be communicating that information out to them. But, but at this point, I feel like it's, it's kind of hard to be able to say, or to determine what they're specifically asking about and how we.
Great, a great answer, because I was gonna ask you a second question. What, what programs exactly are they?
Yeah.
And, and so maybe I missed something in there.
Yeah, I'm afraid I don't know based on the, on the
Okay.
survey at this point, but these are follow-up questions we can be asking and, and touching base with. And it looks like Jaime has a response.
So I, so I run the title, I helped run the Title VI, which, which our Indian ed. We have Amanda Jenks and Ronnie K. Wapsack on that committee. And we did me and actually analyzed the data and found that our, our focus was, was, was more on uh, that last question about outside resources, uh, mental health and, and, uh, social emotional. That was where their need was and actually, um, so Grant, I'll probably need to talk to you. I just met last week with them and, and, uh, we, we have a plan moving forward on how to address some of these needs. So as we analyze the data, trying to be very, uh, not aggressive, but intentional with, with how we respond to the data. And we do have a response, um, and that involved Ronnie K. Wapsack in that decision. So, um, I'll fill you in a, at some point. But we felt that the big challenge was, it's outside of school act, of normal school activities. They just didn't know how to, how to access some of those resources.
Great, thank you for looking into that.
Great, thank you.
I don't, just anecdotally, this is great to see all these responses because I have been on the board five years and we've had, you know, just a handful in all those five years, so it's great. One or two of them here.
Well, and I can say, I, I, I can't take credit for it. Jaime and, and superintendent were the ones who were, were responsible for getting all of the survey information out and, and coordinating the efforts with the education department. But I know that we in the bit, that, so, Impact Aid is a, is a funding mechanism, right? And, and, uh, there are requirements that we in the finance department are, are supposed to make sure happen and, and take care of. And some of them are things such as make sure that the policy, the Impact Aid policy that the board just renewed, uh, gets out, is dissemin-. So, uh, I know one thing I've been looking at since, since coming as administrator is how can we improve that to make sure it's getting out and, and people are able to see that the parents and, and the tribal officials are able to see it better. Uh, so I know one of the things that we'll be doing here in the near future is, uh, and this actually jumps down to the, the portion about Impact Aid Committee is, um, I'll, I'll be working with Jaime and Dean and superintendent to go visit with the education department to get information such as what's the preferred method of communication with the tribe, um, to be able to pass this information along, uh, and be able to comply. But then also, how do we, how do we improve everything? And it's, you know, we're, it sounds like what, what's been happening is we're on the right track. We're gonna also make sure the business department, strengthening our connections in that way. Superintendent, do you have anything to add there?
Yeah, I, I just want to point out to the board that when the board engages in policy review, it makes us better. It really does. Uh, I, Jaime and I had a conversation early in the fall when we realized that this is a policy we needed to review. Um, so as part of that process, we looked real closely at the policy and it's forced us now, or caused us to really relook at our practices and our procedures. And we've tightened some things up. That's why I think we got those responses and, and, uh, we're, we're doing a few things differently because of, you know, it all starts with, policy is our foundation. So when, when we're kind of, you know, struggling through some of the policy, just know, board members, that it, it does make a difference. It makes a significant difference. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it's a great thing and not something that the board needs to work on right now, but it's great information and it's great to know that our district's striving to improve in areas that we're weak. That's the only way we ever get better. Grant, is that everything that you needed?
Um, yes, and, and I'm just, please know, we're, we're, I'm open to, uh, further comment and further, um, if, if you have a, a particular suggestion for how, how you might respond to any of these, uh, items of feedback, um, please reach out. I'm, I'm happy to hear it.
Okay, we will do that, right, board members? Okay, thank you, Grant, very much. Um, patron input. Do we have any patron input? We have no patron input at this time. Is there any further business for the Impact Aid meeting? Shaun has said no. I think she's been checking it.
Did you check Survey Monkey? I'll check right now and see if there's anything relevant.
We're gonna pause for just a second. Um, while they're looking at Survey Monkey, board members, do you have anything else for the Impact Aid meeting? During these awkward silent moments, Tanya is gonna sing for us.
We have zero responses present electronically.
Okay, zero responses electronically. Tanya was starting to sweat there for a minute. She just barely made it by. Um, so I'd entertain a motion to, to close the Impact Aid meeting. Come on, Robin, I know you got some fire in you.
I'm gonna close our Impact Aid meeting.
Robin makes a motion and...
I'll second it.
Tanya seconded it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We will start our business meeting promptly at seven PM.
Do you guys plan dessert?
Shaun, oh, what did you bring for dessert? Look in front of us. Uh, anybody need a lifesaver? Look in front of them. Uh anybody need a lifesaver?
You ready? Good. Welcome to the UNA School Board Business Meeting. Today is November eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The meeting is being held at Eagleview Elementary, three oh one north, fifty-seven fifty east Roosevelt, Utah. Present at this meeting is President Dave Shivers, Vice President Tanya McKee, Robin McClellan, Todd Massey, Denise Maynard, Student Board Member Representative Kate Larson, Superintendent Dr. Rick Woodford, and myself, Grant Stoddard, the Business Administrator. The time is seven o'clock P M.
Welcome, everybody. We're glad to have you um here. We appreciate everybody coming and joining our meeting. It's been a while since we celebrated a birthday. That's Christie Nurdin's birthday, so wish her happy birthday today when you um run by her, so.
She has a long birthday.
It's not your birthday? Yours really was a few days ago. What day, Christie?
Happy birthday.
Oh, I've had one since then. All right. I had no idea it was Christie's birthday a week ago, but happy birthday. Um, our reverence tonight will be Principal Sharon Shipton, and our pledge of allegiance will be Courtney Simmons.
Our Father in Heaven, we bow our heads as we um gather here tonight to um make great decisions about our school district, to um help our students be the best that they can absolutely be. We ask that thy Spirit will be here tonight, that we'll go have clear heads and make great decisions. We ask you to help us to be kind to each other. We're thankful for um this opportunity we have to serve our students in this district. And uh we're thankful for the um educators that are here and are serving in our district as well. Let me say this name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Leading us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys, for your help. We appreciate that. Great way to be able to start a a meeting in this free country of ours. Um, Student Board Member Report, Kate Larson, we'll turn the time over to you.
Perfect. Um, October was kind of not very eventful for us, but I'll give you what I have. So we have a crazy cool thing. FFA took fourth in the nation for their floor culture. Um, and boys cross-country took tenth in the state, which is pretty good because last year we were at about, I think, twenty-first. So we jumped a lot. Um, Boys Swim won their first meet, and they're looking forward to a good season. Um, we had scare games, and that was a success. We saw a lot of attendance. Um, we have upcoming, we have Spirit of Uinta, which is like a boys' pageant, and we would love some community involvement there. Um, it's the sixteenth at seven P M. Um, Percy Jackson, the musical, opens tonight, and it goes till Saturday. Um, and then basketball and wrestling, they start. Uh, they're just starting. Basketball just had tryouts, and wrestling is looking forward to winning another state championship. Um, and we have the Shannon Johnson Tournament, um, the thirtieth through the second. And we were also able to pick our student scholars for um our school, and there will be more information on them later on. Yeah, that's Uinta this month.
Kate, that's great. Lots of great accomplishments, but you say the FFA took fourth in the nation?
Yeah, it was really cool. They went to Nationals just last week and won, so yeah.
In horticulture, I can't say horticulture.
Floor culture, yeah. And uh they were the highest-ranked team in the state at Nationals, too. Everyone else got like fifth or sixth, but we got fourth. So we got the highest-ranked team in the state at Nationals.
I think that deserves a round of applause for the FFA. Great, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Don't run off. You're staying all night, right?
No, I can't.
No, you can't.
It's finals week.
It's finals week.
Yeah.
Whenever you need to go, we understand. Thank you for coming with the long trip over.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna turn the time over to the um Superintendent for the Students of the the Month. Um, Board Members, if we will, I think we'll go down in front of the stage. Um, and we'll turn the time over to Superintendent to get us kicked off.
Great, thank you. First of all, uh, welcome, parents, community members. It's good to have you here, students. Uh, this is the best part of of our board meeting. It's always good to see the our our students and their their bright, shiny faces. Um, it's it's often said that, you know, for every student of the month, there should be a parent of the month. We really appreciate, parents, your uh support of your students. It's really uh key in their success, so thank you for what you do. Uh, with that, principals, if you could line up right against this wall with your students. So students, come on over here with your principals or teachers, whoever's here to support you tonight. And we're gonna start um as as we usually do, principals, write in order with the um spreadsheet that you have. Who's first? So we're gonna start with Central Cove Preschool, and then we'll go to Ashley. And write down the list, okay? So, parents, after you've gone, uh, we do have Jeff Lysick here. Jeff, raise your hand behind us. He's gonna take pictures out in the lobby, okay? Thank you.
So Erin's still waiting on her little student, so I'm gonna start because my student's parents called today, and unfortunately, he ended up sick at home, so we're really sad. But our Student of the Month this month at Ashley Elementary was Jett Whole Little. Um, I mean, my eyes, I guess I'm getting old. Um, his teacher said at first Jett was nervous coming to school, and as the year has gone on, he has gained more and more confidence. Every day we talk about having a great day and being excited, and he always tells me we're going to have a great day and that he's ready to learn. He is always kind to others and always tries his hardest. So congratulations to Jett.
So I'm Erin Brown. I'm the coordinator at Central Cove Preschool, and here to talk about our Student of the Month, Kingston Evans, are two of his teachers, Miss Monica and Miss Crystal.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, so most of you know that what we do at the preschool is a lot of uh social and self-regulation skills. So we work on that every day with some of our students, but some students just come by it naturally, which we're really, really grateful for, and Kingston is one of those um students. So tonight, we would like to honor him. He just has a natural ability to include and befriend all students in our classroom. He's excited to see them when they come to school, and he goes out of the out of his way to make sure that they're comfortable and um are feeling welcome and included. He praises them for things that they're doing well, and he encourages them when um they're doing something that might be more difficult. He encourages them to be successful. And um he has the best manners. He always says please and thank you. Sometimes even says ma'am, so that's pretty cool. Um, and he he feel he gives compliments to peers and teachers alike, and he's an amazing example of what being a friend truly is. And we're super happy to have him in class, and he encourages all of us to be better humans.
This little gal needs to be seen. Are you ready? All right. First of all, take a look at that bright, smiling face. She is amazing. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Amelia Harrison. Uh, she is an amazing first grader. She is an example of uh what it means to be a Davis Dragon and our Davis Dragon Creed, because Davis Dragons are the best. She is responsible each day when she follows directions and manages her herself and others around her. She is respectful to her classmates, teacher, and the and all that she needs. She follows the rules in the classroom and on the playground so that her and those around her are safe. She has good teamwork and is kind to all those that interact with her. Amelia is a hard worker and brings joy to her classroom each day. She is definitely deserving of being the Davis Dragon Student of the Month.
All right, so we're Discover Elementary, and I'm Tammy Christensen, and our Student of the Month is Oliver Anderson, and his teacher, Mrs. Gress, um is going to talk about him.
I chose Oliver for Student of the Month because he consistently shows his Discovery Fox pride. He is always doing what is expected of him and more. He is an example to the other students in class. He always says please and thank you, and he helps others in need and participates in class.
Great, Oliver, proud to be what? Proud to be? Yes!
Traxton, I'm not lifting you on the stage.
Nope.
Traxton, I'm Tina Daniels. I'm the eighth grade, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math teacher, and I have had the pleasure of being Traxton's teacher for two years now. Traxton is a fun kid. He's smart, he's funny, he works hard. He's learned a lot. He's learned learned that speed kills, that it's more important to do it right the first time than do it quickly the first time and then have to redo it. Um, at the end of the year last year, we challenged him to slow down and really think about his year-end testing. He did that, and he reached his goal. And he's continued this year. Traxton is a problem solver. He likes to he likes to figure it out. He he jumps right in, and he starts trying to solve those math problems. And sometimes his paper is just a mess of erasing and writing and erasing and writing some more. And he wants to figure it out and get it right and and know if he's got it. And if he doesn't, he's like, ah, and then he goes right back to trying to fix it. Um, he helps others. I can put him anywhere in any group, and he will help those around him and help his group. It doesn't matter. He's a friend. Never once has anybody come to me and said Traxton's being mean. You know, he's just he's just a fun kid. He's he's so willing to do what he needs to do. I've enjoyed having him in class, and I look forward to the success he's gonna he's gonna have in the future. And Traxton, I think everybody should be a little more like a Traxton. So good job.
Come up here so I can see you.
So our our November Leader of the Pack, our Wolf Pack, is Avon Lee Simmons, and our teacher, Mrs. Hayes, wants to tell us some wonderful things about her.
So I have Avon Lee in the mornings, and Mrs. Smith has her in the afternoons, and we both absolutely one hundred percent agree that she is a perfect Student of the Month to represent what a La Pointe Wolf is and should be. She is our number-one hype girl in the class. She is the first to cheer anybody on, whether they're like killing it or like doing awful. She's there to encourage them and the and to give positive encouragement there. She is kind and a friend to everyone and sees the lonely or the shy and will help them out. And she works hard. So those were some of the things that we love most about Avon Lee.
We learned, we before this, we had to learn more about La Pointe, and we learned that wolves howl together to solidify pack bonds, so we're all gonna howl together. You ready? One, two, three.
So I'm Denise Villia, so Principal Principal Mazur, and Brielle is our Cub of the Month. I'm so excited to share with you what her teacher said. She said Brielle is a very respectful and caring young lady and dedicated She said Brielle is a very respectful and caring young lady and dedicated learner. She loves to write stories and is very creative. In her personal time, she often draws illustrations and stories to give them away as gifts to her classmates. I admire her courteous and responsible attitude for learning. Brielle is remarkable, a remarkable student and a friend to all. And I have to share one of my most favorite parts about Brielle is that she says everyone at Mazer is kind to her and she sees that because that's what she looks for. So when we look for the good like Brielle, that's what we see. So thanks Brielle.
I'm Deanna Martino, Principal at Naples Elementary and our Student of the Month this month is Hannah Gardner. Hannah is a third grade student. However, she has a unique situation. Her mother is her teacher, but she was nominated by the other third grade teachers and this is what they had to say about her. Hannah is a hard worker and strives to do her best in every situation. She's been a support to her classmates in and out of the classroom. She continually shows kindness to all and her grade level teachers notice that she is the first one to show willingness to help any of us. She's a joy to have in third grade. She's an awesome student. Thank you Hannah.
Sorry, break the rules. I have Jack Tapana from YMS. He's our Student of the Month. He's a spectacular young man. He is funny and he is kind and he's wicked smart and we all love him, so let's wait to nominate him.
Our Student of the Month for Bernal Middle School is Ama Nada. Unfortunately, she and her family were not able to be here tonight. But a few things about Ama from her teachers, they all agree that she is the perfect example of hard work. One of the most important skills that students can learn is the ability to start and finish a task or a project and from beginning to end and to do it well. And Ama is a good, a great example of this. She takes on every task and assignment, works hard and does her best and comes out with excellent results. And not only is she hardworking and attentive to detail, she also pays close attention to her friends and classmates. She is always caring and willing to help others. She makes others feel welcome, especially with her contagious smile and her laughter.
Before I introduce Mason, I'm gonna be a little self-serving and tell the board another event that recently happened at the high school. The marching band just got back from state marching band in Western Regionals this last weekend. Finished fifth in state and seventh in our division in Western Regionals. This is Mason. So funny story. Two Fridays ago, we're sitting in our PLC data analysis meetings and we're supposed to nominate as a department a student for a grit poster that goes in the comments area of the school. If you've ever been in there, you've seen the grit posters up there. And the student that I nominated was Mason. And Chris Piner nominated another student and so we discussed it as a department and in the end we decided that the student that Chris had nominated was a better fit for that poster. And much to my disappointment because I thought Mason would look really good hanging up in the commentary all the time, but it's fine. I was okay with the decision. So we go down to, we go down to St. George for state marching band and I get an email Friday night from Mr. Mansfield and he says, "Wanted to congratulate you that you've chosen Mason to be Student of the Month. We're really excited about it. You need to be at board meeting on Wednesday night presenting." I'm like, well, okay, I don't remember nominating him for Student of the Month, but okay. Turns out while I was absent from the meeting this week, they said, "You know what? We didn't choose Mason for grit, so let's make him Student of the Month and make Brian go to the board meeting too." So anyway, but that being said, I would have chosen him anyway. And let me tell you why. The Character Ed program that we use at the high school is called Grit and each letter stands for characteristic. Now see if I remember them all. G is gratitude and Mason is grateful for everything that he's ever been given. He shows nothing but gratitude at all times. We're gonna skip R for a second. I is integrity. He's always early. He stays late. He does everything that's asked of him. He never questions anything that we ask him to do. He just does it. T is toughness. He moves one of, some of the heaviest stuff that we have. He sets everything up. He never has to be told how to do anything. He just does it. He meets all those. But the one that I really wanna focus on is responsibility. We have about $200,000 worth of equipment in our trailer that we use during the marching band season. And every day before practice, it all has to be unloaded, taken out to the field, set up. We use it for rehearsal and then take it all back, put it back on the trailer, lock it up for the night so it's safe. Mason, every single practice. First one they're unloading, last one they're securing. I never had to worry about it because I knew that Mason would make sure everything was on there and that it was locked up. There were a lot of days when I had to leave and go take care of other problems and I didn't have to worry about it because I knew Mason would make sure it was done. One of the most responsible human beings you'll ever find. Mason Antion.
So last but not least, I am Anna Dawkins and I'm here representing Ashland Valley Education Center. If you're seeing my face, that means our Student of the Month is an adult education student. And my student this month is Genia Owens. As you know, I always choose a student for their grit and Genia's story is one of the most fabulous gritty person's stories ever. Long story short, she came to the United States from Russia as a child, so English is her second language. She did struggle through school, got frustrated and dropped out in 7th grade. In her mid-20s, she decided to come back and finish her high school credential, which she did. She took her 5th grade average skills in literacy for math and language arts. Not to mention she had to pass social studies and science, which she hadn't been exposed to. And within two years, taught herself, forced herself to study and prep for the GED and this year, this fall, she passed that GED and has her high school credential. As most mid-20-year-olds will do, she has moved to the city, which is why she is not here tonight. And Genia Owens, one of the grittiest, wonderful, feisty people you will ever have the pleasure to meet.
President, that concludes our celebrations. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's great. Favorite part of the meeting, it's fun to see them. Only thing I got to say, no child should have to go to school with his mother being his teacher. Mine would have killed me. Patron input, no items have been received in accordance with board policy for patron input. So we move on to number three, business and action items, the consent calendar. There's three different things on there, board members. You can do them all at once or you can split them apart, whatever you'd like to do on the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Tanya and a second by Robin to approve the consent calendar. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Policies for approval on first reading. 002.0230, board members, midterm vacancies on the board. All entertain a motion to approve that policy?
I'll make a motion to approve policy 002.0230, board members, midterm vacancy on the board.
Denise makes a motion?
On, on first reading.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Robin seconds. Any further discussion on this policy? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to accept the personnel changes?
I'll make a motion to accept the personnel changes.
I have a motion by Tanya. Do I have a second? Todd Massey seconds that motion. Dr. Lise is grow the beard. Jaime Laba's gonna take care of this for us?
No, Dr. Lise is excused. It is her birthday tomorrow and she's on a vacation, so...
Well, good deal. We'll pick on her next month then.
But it is my birthday today, so...
It is your birthday today?
It is. So there are 16 candidates to fill new hire positions, six LA specific license endorsements, two current employees who have recently been assigned to a new position and three candidates to fill extracurricular coaching positions.
Board members, if, do you have any questions for Jaime? Remember to use a number and not a name. You okay, Robin? Todd?
Think I'm good, yep.
You okay, Tanya?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, we have need to go into a closed session and so we'll read...
I move that you and a school board of education enter into closed session for the following: Discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual.
We need to go in by roll call. Denise, will you start us off, please?
Maynard, aye.
Massey, aye.
McClellan, aye.
McKee, aye.
Shuber, aye.
The time is 7:32.
Principals, administrators, you can be excused except, except one I've talked to. Anyway, thanks for being here and have a great night. Travel safely.
...
I'm saying that's gonna be on the ballot.
It was, it flashed him but they didn't, they didn't go through.
They did.
The time is eight o'clock. Welcome back to the United School Board Business Meeting. Returning from closed session, the time's eight o'clock.
I'm sorry, do I need to do anything else? Are we ready to go?
Motion to come back.
To come back.
We need a motion to come back into our regular business meeting.
I would make a motion to reconvene our business meeting.
Todd makes a motion.
I'll second it.
Who was that? Denise.
Sorry, I put something in my mouth.
That was Denise with a mouthful. I hope somebody's listening giggling with us. Good deal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. We'll turn the time over to Superintendent for calendaring items.
Okay, thank you President. So if you're, board members, if you'll go into board docs, you, you can see, there's, there's quite a few, uh, this month as we get into, you know, the Thanksgiving, uh, you know, kind of getting almost to the holiday season, right? So, so there's, uh, there's quite a, quite a few things going on in the schools. I know we talked about community councils. I'm just trying to look and see if there's any coming up. There's a Davis one. Davis?
Oh, tonight.
Tomorrow.
No, it's today.
Just had it.
That one's done. We'll try to get more of those on there. I, I appreciate the, the comments about that. It is important and certainly would love to see board members when you can to attend some of those. There is one at Vernal Middle School on, um, December 6th. So if any of you are interested, that, that would be good. And, and just a variety of different activities, extracurricular and, um, you know, please again, if, if you guys are, are interested in attending any of those, uh, you're welcome.
Superintendent, mention this one, would you, please?
So that one.
For the, yeah, third one down from the community. Lunch meeting with Senator Wintertown.
Second page, gentlemen. Oh yeah, right there. The lunch meeting?
Yeah.
Yes, so on December 12th, we have a lunch meeting with Senator Wintertown and Representative Chu. It's at, uh, noon and that meeting is going to be at the, yeah, what's it called?
Swains.
Yes, Swains, Swains? Steakhouse. That's right. Okay. Uh, same place we met last year.
What, noon, did you say? Sorry.
Yeah, it's at noon.
Okay.
And, and I think if there's, if there's any concerns or questions that you have, maybe write them down and be prepared to share with them. Um, also, we have the, the Utah School Board Association priorities. You guys should have received an email. Uh, go back and search in your email and there's a pamphlet and it shows the legislative priorities for the, for the Utah School Board Association. I think it's good to review those, so those are fresh on your mind. We, we'd certainly want to support, uh, you know, those, uh, those priorities. So outside of that, um, hopefully we can just have a good informal conversation with, with our legislators.
So was that meeting one, or noon to four?
No, it's just at noon and usually we go an hour and a half, maybe ninety minutes.
Alright, that's what I thought, cause I, my schedule when it came through went noon to four, so that's what I was getting at.
It could, it could go for a couple hours, but if you have to leave for work, uh, you feel welcome to leave anytime you need to.
That works.
Yeah, but it'd be great to have all of you there. I think that's, it's our opportunity to, if anything else, to build a good relationship with those, uh, those two individuals. They, they work hard for us and it would, you know, the better relationship we have with them, the better odds that they'll care what we think and that's important, right? It's good.
I wondered if, if it would be a good idea, Superintendent, if the board members have something they'd like to discuss with them or is a priority for them? Board members, do you think if we give that priority to the superintendent and he wrote it down? I mean, if we go to that meeting with sixty different things we want to talk about, we're not gonna get anything done. And they'll be frustrated because, but if they left that meeting with one or two things on their mind that our district is concerned about, that they, that they take the time to think about and, um, so when they're there visiting with their colleagues, even if it's just our opinion on something, if that would be just one or two simple, I don't think we want to get it. But if you have something, would that be alright Superintendent if they sent them to you?
Yeah, yep, absolutely.
Board members, if you have something that's important, that you're worried about, that you want them watching, let's, send as many as you want to the superintendent and then if the, if the list gets very long, we'll try to prioritize and then just build a relationship after that, I think is.
I like that idea.
I know I made that commitment to give it to Senator Chu and I haven't done so on attendance issues. Okay, on, or on, I, I think it's called truancy?
Yeah, yeah, that's a big issue across the state right now. Um, it's a big issue. And I know there's some proposed legislation that will address that and I would also support that, you know, that,
We chat about it.
We express that concern so that we can address that, not just statewide, locally here or two. Uh, we need to back certain of our principles. Yeah.
Another thing that, um, I'm thinking about for calendaring, the first of December, January, we have the USBA conference. Robin's gonna kill me if I get it wrong. Is that correct?
USBA Annual Conference Show.
Have all of you communicated with Shawna? I seen an email today where by December 8th, her ability to get us a motel room closes. So if you haven't communicated, are all of us, is everyone planning on going?
I am not.
You are not? Cut her pay. Does she get a pay? Let's cut it. Okay.
It's Grant going.
If you haven't let Shawna know what your plan is and what's happening, please do so that she can wrap that up.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, thank you. I don't have anything else unless there's questions about the calendar items.
Okay, if there's no more discussion about calendaring items, Denise, do you have anything else for this board meeting? Todd?
Just one comment on our training last week. It was short, it was sweet, but I think there was, I, I think some of the things that, that you've implemented, and I, I'm just impressed with what I hear from my grandkids. They feel like they're being pushed at school and, and that is, I think that's good. I think that's a plus because it makes them focus on what's most important and there's that education and, and they're feeling the pressure, so I know the teachers are pushing that rigor. So I, I think it's cool. I think it really is, so. So thank you for, for your efforts and, and I'm excited to, to be where we can be as that number one in the state, so.
Well, Todd, I appreciate that. I also have a distinct memory of some conversations we had right here in this building a couple of years ago and, uh, and I, I appreciate the foundation the board has set with their strategic plan, with what, you know, the, the direction that I've received from you. Uh, it's been instrumental in, in making all of this happen and come together, so I really appreciate the support of this board. This, this is the kind of team I like to be on. I like to be on a winning team that's moving in a positive direction, making things happen. I don't like status quo and I don't like complacency and so thank you board members for being a great team.
Thank you. That's all, President. Robin?
I just think it's great we're at Eagleview Elementary. It's, it is, November is Native American Heritage Month and I just, no one's here, but just for the record, I just really appreciate diversity of thought. I love, um, the culture, the traditions, the history that, uh, our Native American neighbors and friends bring to our base, the basin. So anyway, that's all I want to say.
Tanya?
I just will say ditto to Robin.
Okay, thank you. Grant, do you have anything else for this meeting?
Nothing, President.
I'm gonna give the superintendent the last word tonight. I just want to say that, um, I'm proud to be part of this team. And I want to thank the board members and our administrative leaders. Um, we don't do everything perfect and we make mistakes. Um, I think one of the great things about that is we're willing to accept the mistakes that we make and, and make them right. But I'm, I'm proud to be, um, on this team and I think you and the district is moving in a, in a positive direction and I think we got great things to look forward to in the future. So thank all of you board members and thank, thank you guys for all of your hard work. Superintendent, do you have anything else?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, uh, President, thank you. Um, you know, Chris Jones, in his presentation tonight, he was vulnerable and he, uh, he shared some, not just the, the good things that are happening, but he shared publicly some of the things that are challenges that they're working on in their, in their classrooms and in his school. And that growth mindset, it, it gave me goosebumps. Um, I really appreciated that because that's who we are, right? We're trying to get better and we're trying to learn and, and grow and really become this unified team. We, we've been talking a lot about, you know, "we" is greater than "me" is one of our slogans, right? And I feel like that's happening. It's a cultural shift. It doesn't happen overnight, but I feel like that, that concept of team and "we" is, um, is continuing to expand and grow and, uh, and again, this board is part of that, so thank you and, uh, I just appreciate the staff. I've, I've had the opportunity to be in a lot of classrooms, uh, this fall, which has been fantastic. I, up till this year, I have, I've been in classrooms, but not to the extent I have this fall. And it just has reaffirmed that we have some amazing teachers in this school district. We really do. And, uh, and I just appreciate them and their efforts with our kids. It's, it's been fantastic. So just wanted to make sure that the board knew, um, you know, my feelings about our teachers. It's, they're wonderful. So that's all I have, President.
Thanks Superintendent. I'd entertain a motion to close.
I would make a motion to close the business session.
Todd makes a motion to close.
I'll second it.
Denise seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Is the recording off?
The time is eight thirteen.
Okay, Shawna, are you trying to tear down and go home tonight? Are you taking this stuff with you? Let's all jump in and help Shawna for a minute if we can and maybe we can all go home.